Six budget of the movie and television review and classification board. The total new appropriations for the MTRCB amounts to fifty-one million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand pesos. Before I proceed, I would like to acknowledge Senator, acknowledge the presence of Senator Robin Hood Padilla. Thank you to our resource persons and their staff from the MTRCB present in today's briefing. May we ask our comsec to spread it, record the names of officials from the MTRCB and other agencies if any, so they may be properly acknowledged.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We would like to acknowledge the presence of our guests for the Movie and Television Review and Classification Board. We have Chairperson Yirella Maria Soto Antonio, Attorney Paulino Itasas Jr., Attorney Cesar Pareja, Roberto Sis Dizyembre, Attorney Anna Farina Mindalano. We also have Ms. Alina Tobia, Delia Baldo, Ms. Verna Cabanyas, Mr. Francis Cuig, Ms. Jesusa Lorenzo. We have also Mr. Dariel Adrian Daria, Mr. Juan Roberto Ramos, Ms. Annabelle Rosal, Mary Chris Canha, Adeline Santos, James Powik, Carl Reden Valdos, Jefferson Cruz, Amado Ablaw, Edgardo Rivera, Nazarene Porcelino. From the Commission on Audit, we also have Mr. Amado Ablaw and Mr. Edgar Rivera. From the Department of Budget and Management, we have Ms. Tenerife Abalos Manza and Mr. Michael Angelo Adahar. That would be all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Secretary. Before anything else, allow me to greet the MTRCB family on your fortieth founding anniversary. Congratulations. And this morning, we will be dissecting your proposed total agency budget of two-hundred-twenty-one million, two-hundred-ninety-seven for fiscal year 2026. Hundred sixty-five point six-nine-eight million of which, for your maintenance and other operating expenses and capital outlay, will be sourced from your own revenues and provided for under the special provisions. This is the third year that we are sponsoring your budget, so I am quite familiar with your operations, and we welcome the MTRCB family once more to your Senate. And during the nineteenth Congress, the Senate approved a third reading Senate Bill Number Twenty-eight zero five, which strengthens and expands demanded of the MTRCB to cover online streaming platforms in view of the digital transformation of the media landscape. Thanks to Senator Robin Hood Padilla. And its counterpart measure in the House of Representatives remained pending at the committee level, at the committee level. Sa house, wala? Tamad sila eh. Meanwhile, many industry stakeholders expressed opposition to the measure, saying it invinges on a struggling film industry, strangles creativity, and adversely impacts freedom of expression and artistic integrity. It is in this context that we should look into your budget, together with the direction that the agency is taking with your proposed table of expenditures and programs for next year. Finally, this representation is happy to share with the MTRCB that I filed Senate Bill Number Eight-seven-eight establishing the retained income fund, recognizing your predicament about not being able to fully manage and optimize revenue collection in financing, operational expenses, and to do away with inefficiency of seeking approval from Congress and the DBM, but still under strict safeguards of transparency and accountability. Please let me know if you are amenable to this proposed legislation. At this point, uh... Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, Lala, do you have any opening statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Senator Jingo Ehehristo Estrada, Honorable Senator Robin Hood Padilla. Isang mapagpahalang umaga po sa inyong lahat. I am honored to present to you today the proposed budget of the Movie and Television Review and Classification Board for fiscal year 2026. The Movie and Television Review and Classification Board was created under the Presidential Decree One-Nine-Eight-Six on October five, nineteen eighty-five, comprised of one chairperson, one vice-chairperson, and thirty board members. We now proceed to the accomplishments of the MTRCB. From January to December twenty-twenty-four, the MTRCB reviewed a total of five-hundred-eighty-two films. This includes three-hundred-thirty-seven foreign films, two-hundred-forty-five local films, of which one-hundred-forty-five were independent and one-hundred mainstream. The chart on the slide illustrates the breakdown of these films by classification. From January to June twenty-twenty-five, the MTRCB reviewed a total of two-hundred-eighty-five films, comprising one-hundred-seventy-four foreign films and one-hundred-eleven local films, of which sixty-four were independent and forty-seven mainstream produced. Next slide, please. This chart shows the comparative trend of foreign and local films reviewed and classified by the MTRCB from two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty-five. In two thousand nineteen, reviews peaked at two-hundred-thirty-three local and three-hundred-seventeen foreign films, but significantly dropped in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one due to the pandemic's impact on film production and distribution. Starting twenty-twenty-two, the numbers steadily recovered, with both local and foreign films showing consistent growth. By twenty-twenty-four, reviews reached two-hundred-forty-five local and three-hundred-thirty-seven foreign films, the highest since two thousand and nineteen. For the first half of twenty-twenty-five, the board has already reviewed one-hundred-eleven local and one-hundred-seventy-four foreign films, showing strong performance mid-year and indicating a likely increase by year-end. So you will see in the graph, Mr. Chairman, that the peak was in two thousand nineteen, and by twenty-twenty-five, we already surpassed half of the two thousand nineteen peak. Next slide, please.
Why is it that there are more foreign films than local films? What is happening?
I think it would be the priority of the distributors to distribute foreign films as opposed to producing their own local films.
Foreign films meaning, ano'y marami, Korean films, American films?
Hollywood, Hollywood, Mr. Chairman, Hollywood films.
Hindi kasi, it's a pity that there are more foreign films that are being shown than local films in our own country.
I think the problem would probably be the ticket prices.
The exorbitant prices, the tickets?
Yes, I think that's the main problem of the producers.
Bakit tinatangkilik mo foreign films? Ganun din naman na presyo, right?
Yes, but I think hindi ka na kasi maglalabas ng kapital if you distribute a foreign film as opposed to producing your own local film, aside from the ticket prices.
Uh, masyado mahal 'yung ticket?
Opo.
How much for? Four hundred?
It depends on the cinema. The lowest would be four hundred.
The highest would be?
One thousand four hundred. For specialty cinemas po.
Huh?
For specialty cinemas, but...
What do you mean? Can you please elaborate? Ano'y special, special ano?
Specialty cinemas, they have a different arrangement, amenities, equipment, seats, free food.
So hindi ka kayanin ng masa yun? Definitely?
Hindi po.
So 'yung mga nanonood dun, 'yung mga mayaman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Saan 'yung mga specialty cinemas?
Well, we have in BGC, there is 'yung bed, 'yung kanilang facilities, diba? Tempur bed. And then there is Wolfgang Cinema, VI cinema.
'Yung isang bed nun, saan tao lang?
Pangdalo po.
Uy! As in, kama talaga?
Yes, kama po.
Okay, sige, sige.
Sige po. Also, one more factor, Mr. Chairman, is that some, or majority, not naman majority, but some, there are a lot of movies produced locally, yes, but they go straight to online streaming. They skip the part of being theatrically distributed in the country.
So you don't have any, uh... Uh, hindi niyo na i-screen niyo na?
No, Mr. Chairman. Online streaming is not under our jurisdiction, as of now.
So out of the, uh, hundred, two-hundred-forty-five local films, how many are in this year?
Which one, boss? Mr. Chairman?
Twenty-twenty-four. Out of the two-hundred-forty-five that you reviewed, how many are in this?
One-hundred-forty-five indie local films.
One hundred mainstream?
Yes. One hundred meaning the big players. Viva, regal.
Why is that so? Bakit mas marami indie? Mas mura?
Mas mura pong production.
So mas kumikita indie?
And there are also a lot of festivals.
Dun sa one hundred mainstream movies, ilan 'yung kumita dun?
That we do not have a record of, Mr. Chairman.
You don't have any idea?
No. That would fall under the FDCP already.
Yeah, kasi pagkumita lahat 'yung one hundred films, siguro mas marami, mas marami pang mga producers sa may inga niyo na magproduz ng local films, am I correct? Kasi pagka nalugi lahat, eh, wala talagang magagawa, hindi talaga magpuproduz.
Hmm.
Yeah, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this chart shows the comparative trend of foreign and local films. I'm sorry. The chart shows the production of local mainstream and independent films from two thousand nineteen to June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Independent films led in two thousand and nineteen and twenty-twenty, but mainstream productions gained momentum in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Both sectors surged in twenty-twenty-three with ninety mainstream and one-hundred-eleven independent films, and peaked in twenty-twenty-four with one-hundred and one-hundred-forty-five respectively. For twenty-twenty-five, already at forty-seven mainstream and sixty-four independent films by mid-year, the totals may match or surpass previous years. This reflects the strong recovery and continued growth of the Philippine film industry. Next slide. This chart presents the trend of reviewed and classified films from two thousand eleven to June twenty-twenty-five. Film classification peaked in twenty fifteen with six-hundred-sixty-eight films, followed by steady outputs until twenty nineteen. A steep decline occurred in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one due to the pandemic, dropping to just seventy-five films in twenty-twenty-one. Recovery began in twenty-twenty-two with consistent growth, leading to five-hundred-eighty-two films in twenty-twenty-four. For the first half of twenty-twenty-five, two-hundred-eighty-five films have already been classified, indicating a strong performance towards surpassing the previous year's total.
Do you think we can surpass the twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am certain.
We're... Oko po na tayo. We only have three months left.
We have December. We're waiting for the festivals, films come in. This is only until June.
Ah, this is only until June?
Opo, till June twenty-twenty-five, which is the first semester of the year.
Alright.
Thank you for the reviewed and classified TV programs for fiscal years twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, MTRCB reviewed a total of one-hundred-thirty-one thousand five hundred sixty-one television programs, the majority of which were rated PG, followed by SPG and G, and a minimal X rating. For January to June twenty-twenty-five, which is the first semester of the year, there we already sixty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine programs reviewed with a similar distribution, PG, SPG, G, and very few rated X. These figures highlight that PG remains the dominant classification, reflecting the wide preference for content suitable for general audiences with parental guidance.
Excuse me, meron tinatanong si Senator Robin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Salamat po, ginawang tagapangulo. Tanong ko lang po 'yung, may na X sa TV?
Opo, Mr.
Reddyo, shocking yun. Ano yun? Ano 'yung mga programong yun?
Mr. Chairman, when we say it was X, it does not mean that it is X-rated, that it is automatically nude, or lewd. That only means that...
Critical, no?
No, it only means that it has exceeded the allowed maximum rating classification that we have for television as provided by the PD One-Nine-Eight-Six. For television, SPG is only R thirteen.
So ano po 'yung sobrang bayo?
So if you were R sixteen, if it's, if a sample episode given to us or submitted to us for tape series, or we consider television programs movies that you want to exhibit on television, and it is rated...
Katulad po ng ano ma'am, mga... Kasi maraming, maraming mga konseptong kidnapping, 'yung mga ganun, yun ba yun? Kasama ba yun? Ano raw 'yung mga in X-rated?
For example, a full-length movie that is previously rated R sixteen, that cannot be shown on television according to the PD One-Nine-Eight-Six.
Papano po? Halimama, gusto pa rin nila puputulin?
They will do their own edits according to their own preference.
Delikado, baka pelikula ko pa yan. Sige po, thank you. What are the TV shows that you, uh, classified as X?
TV shows? Uh, these would be the sample episodes for the tape series. Uh, usually, these were the TV shows that were, um, too gory, the action series TV shows.
Yung alin? Foreign?
Uh, gory, mga local films na pinapalaba sa TV, or ating sariling mga TV series.
Like? Like?
Like Batang Quiapo, Black Rider.
In X, in X niyo?
Sample episodes lamang po, so they can submit again and adjust their material, and then we'll give them a new rating.
Okay.
Hindi naman po. It, um, Mr. Chairman, it would always depend on its whole context. It doesn't mean na may sampung sampalan na hindi na pupwede ito. We have to also consider the, um, the whole context of the material that is submitted to us. What we usually, um...
Gugutom ka pa yata eh. Pandamanay pagkain ba?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that one of the reasons why we really X, and we are very strict and firm about, is the use of drugs. That is not for public exhibition, especially on television. Um, clear depiction, paraphernalias, usage.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next slide, for the movie trailers statistics. In twenty-twenty-four, we reviewed five-hundred-forty-nine movie trailers. Three-hundred-two were rated G, two-hundred-thirteen PG, and thirty-four received an X rating. I will explain later, Mr. Chairman. Significantly twenty movie trailer materials received an R rating, highlighting the application of this new classification and reinforcing clearer content standards for adult audiences. If you notice, Mr. Chairman, our slide would show a different, um, pie chart or a different picture from the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to the first semester of January of twenty-twenty-five. We have less X movie trailers in the statistics, which are only two, because we added an additional rating which is rated R, so that we are able to accommodate the trailers for movies above R thirteen. These are the R sixteen movies and the R eighteen movies. Why? Because we want to help the producers to get the audiences and entice them to be able to watch these movies, such as the action movies. How do you entice them if the trailers were restricted to PG only?
So R means restricted?
Opo, that would be for R sixteen and R eighteen movies.
So why didn't you implement it last year?
Well, we only saw the need recently, and we had to go through a lot of process. We had to consult with the ARTA. We did a public consultation with our stakeholders and the producers.
Together with the theater owners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the SEAP.
Did you sound off to the theater owners na babayan niyo ng presyo?
We have been encouraging them to lower the ticket prices for cinemas, and they're very cooperative because they really want to, but unfortunately, it's not up to the SEAP or the Cinema Exhibitors Association of the Philippines. It would be the prerogative of the cinema operators. But I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, speaking of, yesterday, we just reviewed a beautiful movie which is Quezon. And the producer and the, um, the lead actress, Karil, visited the MTRCB, and I was so happy that they shared with us that they would only be charging tickets of students and teachers at two-hundred-fifty pesos.
Where will it be shown?
All over the cinemas.
Pumayag 'yung mga theater owners na two-fifty lang?
That's why, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned this, is because it would also depend on the producer, kung papayag sila, na ganun lang ang kanilang ticket price. So kung papayag sila at kung gugustuhin po nila na magkaroon ng ganong arrangement. This one, I believe, um, Quezon is a historical and educational material, so I think they want a lot of children, a lot of students, to be able to see the movie.
Was it endorsed by the DEPED?
That I don't know po. We just rated the movie yesterday.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next slide. Non-video publicity materials, we reviewed one-thousand-five-hundred-eighteen, essential for movie marketing. These statistics highlight the diversity of content we manage and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of the team role in evaluation and classification. From January to June twenty-twenty-five, the MTRCB rated eight-hundred-thirty-four non-video publicity materials. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the board reviewed and classified a total of two-hundred-sixty-seven thousand and eighty materials, reflecting the volume of submissions across various material categories. This also provides a breakdown of the number of materials submitted per category. For the number of materials rated by the board from January to June twenty-twenty-five, one-hundred-three thousand three hundred ninety materials. The data also presents the distribution of submission across different material categories.
There's an interesting question by Senator Padilla. Yung bang mga political ad dumadali sa inyo?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Straight to the network.
Komelek po ang political materials. They do not fall under our jurisdiction. We only rate, review, screen, and classify television programs and movies.
What if the political ad is injurious to other people?
It does not go through the MTRCB, but it goes through the Ad Standards Council.
It's up to the network to, for them to show it or not to show it. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and the Ad Standards Council.
Alright.
Sa sarili po naming opinion, um, mahihirapan pong MTRCB sa sobrang dami po ng materials. As you can see, uh, two-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, almost three-hundred thousand a year ang aming nire-review. Kung dadaan pa po sa amin ang mga advertisements, we would need more manpower, board members.
I think, oh, sige. You go ahead.
Ah, for a movie trailer? Ah, okay. Sige. The network naman po 'yung bayad nila po. Okay. So a review fee would only be for a TV trailer, five hundred pesos. It doesn't matter. Opo, magpapa-review. It's just a review fee.
I think the networks have their own ethics committee, am I correct, para i-review? Uh, i-review lahat sa mga political...
Kanilang sariling...
Yes, sir. Sila namang magpupuli sa kanilang...
Pinalalabas.
Alright.
Nasa sa inyo po yun, Mr. Chairman, kung gusto niyo pang ibigay sa amin.
Huwag na. Huwag na. Dadami patrabaho niyo.
Opo.
Mamaya, meron pa kayo, alam niyo, mga intriga, meron kayo pinapanigan, alam niyo, syempre, that's politics. Huwag na.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our developmental activities, the MTRCB is not only a regulatory body, but also a developmental agency. Beyond classification, it plays a proactive role in promoting media literacy, responsible viewership, and industry growth. Through partnerships, capacity-building programs, and public information campaigns, the board helps shape a media environment that protects audiences while fostering creativity and innovation. The Responsableng Pananood Campaign, or program, is carried out through diverse initiatives, including seminars, responsible paggabay, pulong, responsible pagguhit, children's film classics, responsible pananood evergreen film showing, and infomercials. These diverse activities ensure that responsible viewership is promoted across schools, communities, and media platforms in engaging and meaningful ways. For the Responsibleng Pananood, we have already reached diverse audiences through forty-one activities for local government units and various communities, twenty-five RP and deputy webinars, MOA partnerships, mobile app webinars, school seminars. These efforts reflect MTRCB's strong push to promote media literacy and responsible viewership nationwide. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, the MTRCB successfully conducted sixty-one developmental activities. I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-four? And as of June twenty-twenty-five, thirty-seven more have already been completed. This collaborative approach guarantees that our efforts are both inclusive and far-reaching. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and the first half of twenty-twenty-five, MTRCB garnered multiple awards and recognitions that affirm its commitment to excellence and good governance. I'm happy to share with you, Mr. Chairman, that the MTRCB again, um, received an unmodified opinion on our fiscal year's financial statements by the Commission on Audit. Four-point-sixty, very satisfactory rating in the annual Agency Performance Review fiscal year twenty-twenty-four by the Department of Budget and Management. Eighty-five-point-seven percent energy audit rating by the Department of Energy. Seal of Excellence in Public Service from the Commission ng Wikang Pilipino. Outstanding End-Gas User Entity Award fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and Hall of Fame. Philippine Good Regulatory Principles Recognition and Awards Program by the Anti-Red Tape Authority. For the financial and physical performance for fiscal years twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, MTRCB had an allotment of one-hundred-thirty-six-point-eleven million, with one-hundred-thirty-point-forty-two million obligated, and one-hundred-fifteen-point-thirty million disbursed. From January to June twenty-twenty-five, the allotment increased to one-hundred-sixty-six-point-nine million, with sixty-nine... with sixty-nine million obligated and sixty point thirty million disbursed, or eighty-seven point thirty-nine percent. This shows higher funding support in twenty twenty five with strong disbursement performance in the first half of the year. For fiscal year twenty twenty four and the first half of fiscal year twenty twenty five, MTRCB demonstrated strong fiscal performance across all key indicators. Compliance levels remained consistently high with ninety-nine point eighty-seven percent in fiscal year twenty twenty four and ninety-nine point eighty-four percent in fiscal year twenty twenty five of entities under the board's jurisdiction adhering to MTRCB rules. Meanwhile, material classifications target were fully met. Two hundred sixty-seven thousand and ninety television programs, trailers, and related materials in fiscal year twenty twenty four and one hundred three thousand three hundred ninety in fiscal year twenty twenty five, all reviewed and classified. Notably, one hundred percent of these materials were acted upon within the prescribed ten-day period. In fiscal year twenty twenty four and the first half of fiscal year twenty twenty five, the MTRCB continued to advance its mandate through timely case resolution and active information dissemination. On case management, eighty-six point seventy-five percent of cases in fiscal year twenty twenty four and seventy-three point seventeen percent of cases in fiscal year twenty twenty five were resolved within the prescribed ninety-day period. While these fall short of the ninety-six percent target, proactive measures are being pursued to accelerate resolution timelines.
Can you please educate us, what are these cases? Just an example.
These are our cases that are all referred to the adjudication committee chaired by the Vice Chairman Attorney Paulino Casas Jr. The violations that we find are usually the unregistered cable entities and the cinemas that do not follow the correct rating and classification that we have issued them. Also, including the monitoring of buses and ferries because they are not allowed to show any material beyond PG. For the revenue collection, for fiscal year twenty twenty four, the MTRCB significantly surpassed its revenue target of ninety-four million, collecting one hundred twenty-one point nineteen million and achieving a one hundred twenty-eight point ninety-three percent of its goal. For the first half of twenty twenty five, revenue collection reached sixty-seven point ninety-seven million against a target of ninety-six million, or seventy point eighty percent accomplishment.
So you will surpass, I'm very sure that you will surpass this ninety-six million by the end of this year?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
In fiscal year twenty twenty four, review fees accounted for the majority of our revenue at seventy-five percent, seventy-five point forty-eight percent, followed by registration fees at fifteen percent and miscellaneous income at nine percent. Budget utilization rate, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four, the MTRCB has demonstrated consistent improvement in budget utilization. In twenty twenty-three, while the obligation rate rose significantly to ninety-seven point seventy-two percent, the disbursement rate was constrained due to the additional funding being released only in the last quarter, limiting the time available for procurement activities. By twenty twenty-four, however, adherence to procurement timelines and strict monitoring of the monthly disbursement program enabled more efficient expenditure. This resulted in a strong obligation rate of ninety-five point eighty-two percent and an improved disbursement rate of eighty-eight point forty-one percent, reflecting effective fund use and timely implementation of programs. As of June twenty twenty five, the MTRCB has obligated sixty-nine million and dispersed sixty point three million, achieving an early disbursement rate of eighty-seven point thirty-nine percent. This strong mid-year performance underscores prudent financial management and positions the agency to its positive fiscal track record for the rest of the year. National Expenditure Program for fiscal year twenty twenty six. The total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six amounts to two hundred twenty-one point two hundred ninety-seven million. Of this, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make it clear that fifty-five point fifty-nine million is the only amount that we will be sourcing from the national government. This will be for our personal services. The larger share of one hundred sixty-five point sixty-nine million will be through our agency's generated income. The graph shows the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six by allotment class with a total of two hundred twenty-one point twenty-nine million. The Personal Services, or the PS, amounting to fifty point sixty million comprises only of twenty-six percent of the total budget that is sourced from the national government. This reflects an eight million increase due to the implementation of another tranche in salary adjustments and the filling of vacant positions. The remaining seventy-four percent, which is the majority of our budget, for the maintenance and other operating expenses and the capital outlay amounting to one hundred sixty-five point sixty-nine million is sourced from our own agency's collected income. And I'm very happy to share with you, Mr. Chairman, that as of July twenty twenty five, we have six hundred thirty-three million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred sixty-two point sixty-four in our sinking fund.
Can you dispose that? No.
Mr. Chairman, this is subject to the DBM's approval.
I thought you, we have been talking about this since I handled the budget of the MTRCB. Haven't you made any representation with the Department of Budget?
Yes, we have done everything already, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we are limited because of the PD one eight eight six provisions regarding the sinking fund. And hopefully, with amended charter of the MTRCB, we will be able to address this.
So kahit, kahit piso, wala kayong nakukuha diyan?
We have to, subject to the approval of the DBM. So we will be sending them our requests for approval of a particular budget or appropriation for a particular program that we want to do.
Pero yung pondoy to six hundred thirty-three million, nasa inyo yan, nasa MTRCB yan, o nasa National Treasury?
It's in the National Treasury with a special account for the exclusive use of the MTRCB.
Only for the exclusive use?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Nasa libro po.
Well, for the information of the body, I filed the Senate Resolution eight seven eight, an act promoting operational efficiency through the establishment of a retained income fund for the MTRCB, amending for the purpose Presidential Decree nineteen eighty-six, otherwise known as creating the Movie and Television Review and Classification Board. Maybe if you're interested, you can review the, can get a copy of the bill that I filed. I think it will fall under the Committee on Public Information, which is headed by
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the support. We appreciate it po.
Alright.
Next slide. By Appropriation Source, the graph shows the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six by Appropriation Source with a total of two hundred twenty-one point twenty-nine million. The agency's specific for personal services, amounting to fifty-one point ninety-nine million, comprises the twenty-three percent of the total budget, while the two percent of which will be for the retirement and life insurance premium. The remaining seventy-five percent will be sourced in special accounts in the General Fund or the Maintenance and Other Operating Expenses and the Capital Outlay, amounting to one hundred sixty-five point sixty-nine million. For calendar year twenty twenty six, the total proposed budget for the Maintenance and Other Operating Expenses amounts to one hundred thirty-eight point two-two-six million. This allocation covers in-house monitoring, training, supplies, materials, utilities, communication, extraordinary and miscellaneous expenses, professional services, repairs and maintenance, taxes, insurance premiums, as well as other operational requirements such as advertising, printing and publication, representation, rent, and subscriptions. The proposed increase of twenty-four million in M O O E is attributed to the following adjustments. For the traveling expenses, this is our in-house monitoring and inspection activities along with the developmental programs, trainings, seminars, and scholarship expenses to fund capacity building programs for board members, staff, and stakeholders. Supplies and materials decrease due to cost adjustments. Utility expenses remains consistent with the previous year's allocation. Communication expenses decrease from optimized usage and cost-saving measures. Professional services to cover the hiring of additional contract of service staff for various units and divisions. Repairs and maintenance for the repair and upkeep of facilities, offices, preview rooms, and the lobby. Taxes, insurance, premiums, and other fees to cover the increase in insurance for equipment. For the other M O O E adjustments, advertising expenses, printing and publication, representation expenses, and subscription expenses. For the capital outlay, the proposed capital outlay for calendar year twenty twenty six amounts to twenty-seven point four hundred seventy-two million, intended to strengthen the agency's technological capacity, mobility, and safety systems. The breakdown of our CO would be machinery and equipment outlay, transportation equipment outlay, other PPE outlay such as installation of a fire alarm system to enhance building safety. And that concludes our presentation for our proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mayroon pinapatulong si Senator Robin, what happened to your building? Meron pa 'yung bagong building?
Maybe I yield to the Executive Director of the MTRCB.
Honestly, sen, talagang hindi na kami kasya sa amin building. Isang seven hundred square na property in T-Mob. Ah, sa dami ng review activity sa nangyayari and clients, lima lang po ang kasyang kotse sa parking. Thirty po ang board members na nagre-review. So talagang malaki po ang problema namin pagdating diyan sa facilities. Ang staff po ng Office of the Chairman and Office of the Executive Director, nasa hallway na lang po nagtatrabaho dahil po sa kakulangan ng espasyo.
Hindi niyo ba kaya magpatayo na sarili niyang building?
Pwede naman po siguro. Lupa po talaga problema.
Walang lupa.
Pwede po siguro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we can afford to build our own building. However, wala po kaming available na lupa.
Wala ba nag-iis stall niyo?
Wala rin kaming nakikitang pwede naming building.
Government property? But at any rate, you are seeking, dito sa twenty twenty-five ga, ang budget niyo is only one hundred sixty-four million, am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
At dun sa NEP, sa twenty twenty-six, two hundred twenty-one. So an increase of how many? Around fifty million pesos?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Ang sinasubmit niyong budget is around two hundred eighty-four million. Pero ang inapproved sa NEP, two hundred twenty-one. So may difference na sixty-three million? Ay, 'yung sixty-three million, saan niyo gagamitin to?
O, eh di.
Marami pong mga repairs kasing kailangan niya.
Sa building?
Opo, inside, tsaka upgrading po ng equipment. Ah, 'yung pong aming i-transact ay medyo malaking kakilanganin. Pero multi-year, 'yung ano niya, upgrading.
So ang gusto ninyo, mabalik 'yung sixty-three million, am I correct? Kasi ito 'yung hinihingi niyo eh. This is what you submitted eh.
Kung pwede po, bakit hindi?
Oh, marami raw insertion mga Senator. Di bigay namin sa inyo, di ba? This is what we'll do. I will, this committee will recommend to bring back the amount that your agency submitted, okay? Amount of two hundred eighty-four million. Kasi there's only a difference of around sixty-three million, okay? We will, this committee will recommend to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Siyempre, aprabahan ang tatay mo yun. O, what, ano pa 'yung mga wishlist ninyo? Meron pa kayo ibang wishlist? Aside from the building, of course.
As a sir, ang aming board, based sa PD nineteen eighty-six, ang remuneration po nila ay five thousand pesos lang po kada buwan. Nakita po natin kung gaano karami 'yung nire-review nila. At ang mga taong ito ay hindi namang mga simpleng tao lang. Naandyan ang mga katulad ni Wilma Galbante, Tony Wireyes, na nagbibigay ng mahabang panahon. Makatarungan ba na five thousand pesos kada buwan ang kanilang tinatanggap? Although, tinasan po ito nung panahon ni Budget Secretary Benjamin Jokno into thirty-four thousand, parang seventeen thousand for Rata and seventeen thousand for Perdiem. Sa dami po ng activities ng MTRCB, panggasoli na lang po talaga ito. So ang aming pong request sana, ay mabigyan ng reviewers' fee na mapupunta talaga sa mga board members na masipag na nagre-review at nagkaklasfaya ng mga materials. Ito naman pong aming, paano kala, ay may basihan, basis sa computation ng National Tax Research Center ng Department of Finance. Kung saan, nadetermine po nila kung magkaano dapat ang makukuha ng isang board member kada material na kanilang narereview. So yun lamang po sana, kung masisinip po natin sa special provision, na kung saan nakalagay, reviewers' fee, the MTRCB is hereby authorized to remunerate the board members for every reviewed material based on the computation approved by the National Tax Research Center of the Department of Finance. Kung 'yan po ay malalagay, ay, I'm sure, tama, nararapat lamang 'yung matatanggap ng ating mga board members na matiyag ang nagre-review at nagbibigay ng kanilang expertise at oras. Araw-araw, kahit may bagyo.
Ilan ba board members ninyo?
Mali, thirty-two po sila lahat. Isang chairperson, isang vice chairperson. Ah, thirty-one 'yung active na nagre-review si Chair.
So kada isang pelikula, ilan 'yan nagis?
Sa first review po, ay may tatlong board members. Sa second review po, ay may limang board members.
Bakit sinami review? Bakit may second review pa?
Ah, first review po, minsan pagka hindi nila gusto 'yung rating, minsan X, minsan mataas like R eighteen. Ah, nagpapass second review sila para bumaba to R sixteen, para mapalabas sa ibang sinehan gaya ng
May third review, may third review pa ba?
Ang third review po, sa malakanyang napo.
Pagka natapos 'yung second review, saan magde-decide? The second, 'yung mga, 'yung mga, ang chairman na?
Mr. Chairman, no.
Second review?
No, Mr. Chairman. It is always the board that has the No, Mr. Chairman, it is always the board that has the final judgment on any material submitted to them for review. First committee is comprised of three board members. The second review committee is comprised of five different board members.
'Yung, 'yung first review committee, kalibawa tatlo kayo, hindi na kayo kasama sa second review?
Hindi na po. Bagong fresh eyes, bagong limang board members ang magre-review sa second review. At sila po ay magbibigay ng nararapat o kaukulang age-appropriate rating sa kanilang judgment, sa kanilang pananaw na naaayon sa aming presidential decree as appointed by the president. So 'yun na po 'yung magiging final decision. Kung sila po ay gustong umapila, sa appeals committee na po ng malakanyang ang susunod.
Can you put it in writing? See, ano, what's your name again? Ah. Paki-forward na lang sa committee so we can review it. So I have no further questions regarding the proposed 2026 budget of the MTRCB. And as your vice chairperson of the Subcommittee on Finance, I recommend the submission of your budget for the consideration of the plenary. However, di pa, di pa tapos. However, our Chairman on the Committee on Finance, Senator Gachalian, has some concerns. So we will have to suspend, at the moment, to wait for his arrival. Ako, wala namang problema. Okay, therefore, our Chairman on Committee of Finance, Senator Gachalian, will make the proper motion to submit your budget for the consideration of the plenary. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the, alright.
Mahal na taga Pangulo.
Oo.
Ah, hindi namang po siguro kaila sa inyo na ang mga malalaking network ngayon ay nache-chismis na pag-aari ng mga politiko. So ito ay hindi magiging fair para sa taong bayan kung totoo. Kung totoo, hindi ko pa sinasabi kasi hindi pa naman ako sigurado, pero chismis pa lang. Totoo pala, oo. Hindi namang po, ano, hindi namang fair para sa mga kandidato na wala namang pera. Nakontrolado nung mga mayayaman na to, ng mga kandidato, na kanila 'yung mga network. So ako pa din umaapila, hindi ko alam, kinatanong ko 'yung aking legis na dapat talaga nasa ilalim ng MTRCB 'yung mga political ad, pati na rin 'yung mga advertising. Kasi marami po ngayon, katulad ng mga produkto ng asukal na nilalagay sa mga pagkain ng bata, na hindi namang na talaga dapat siyang pinakakain sa bata. At lumalabas pa rin sa TV, lumalabas pa rin sa radyo. Para po sa akin talaga, pag MTRCB, pag sinabi mong MTRCB, lahat ng lalabas sa TV, lahat ng lalabas sa pelikula, lahat ng lalabas sa radyo, dapat po talaga dumadaan sa inyo. Lalo na po ngayon sa sitwasyon ng ating bansa na hindi ko na po maipaliwanag kung nasaan tayong sitwasyon. Inaasahan ko po 'yung mga mataas na moral, moralidad ng nandyan sa inyong upisina na magiging kakampi ng taong bayan, na walang kapangyarihan, na magkaroon ng balanse at maiwasan ang brainwashing. Dahil sa totoo po, kayo po ang inaasahan namin. Wala na kaming maasahang ibay. Kayo na lang. At ito pong mandato po ninyo, pag-aaralan po namin, sabi ko nga dun sa legis ko, pag-aaralan niyo to. Kasi dapat nasa kanila to. At kung kailangan magdagdag sila ng tao, task force o ano, kailangan meron. 'Yun lang po, 'yun lang ang concern ko. Talagang wala kaming kakampi, walang kakampi ang mga taong bayan na walang kapangyarihan, 'yung mga kumakandidato na walang pera, pero nasa kanila 'yung galing. Wala silang kakampi. O, kundi kayo lang. Hindi po maasahan talaga. Na ang aasahan natin 'yung mga network, kasi wala na sila, influence na sila ng mga politiko. Chismis lang naman 'yun. Salamat po.
Salamat po, Mr. Chairman. Ako po ay nagpapasalamat sa inyong tiwala sa MTRCB. Ah, nasa sa inyo po 'yan, kung gusto niyo pong ibigay sa mandato ng MTRCB. Kung sa palagay po niyo, ninyo mga senador na ito po ay nararapat. Handa naman po kaming magperform at gawin ang aming mandato. Salamat po.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. As I've said earlier, our Finance Committee Chairman, si Senator Win, has some concerns. Hindi namang, hindi namang mabigat, pero we have to wait for his arrival since I think he's still in malakanyang attending the lead-up meeting. Just enjoy your lunch first and... Okay, session is, hearing is hereby suspended. Thank you very much.